I'm gonna call the meeting of the
Come on over here.
I'm gonna call the meeting of the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee meeting to start. We need to do our roll call. Eric Beckerman?
Yes, are you filming?
And this is the child is here. We have a forum. All right, the first item on our agenda is the FY '23 budget adjustment. Is the FY '23 budget adjustment. And I think we're gonna turn it over to you, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, Finance Committee members. The benefit of the proceedings, referring to spreadsheet right now. Go through this expeditiously. If we get to the larger meeting. We get to the larger meeting, I'll go through a slide deck, has the same content, but it's a little easier to see than you're talking about. So basically, I'll start with the whole picture that the county added FY '22, the surplus. The total surplus was $139,000, which is $0.08. We, as you know, appropriated $600,000 for FY '23 budget. So our real operating surplus is the top line, $4,439,000, $425,000 and $0.08. Which I want to hear is a very similar stretch from FY '22, same approach. Very similar size of surplus. I'm proposing to move $1 million to our stabilization, $1 million to our capital fund, $1 million to forward fund our capital for FY '24. And then we have a running surplus with the amount of year-end drawdown this fiscal year, $1.239 million. The commissioners have elected at this point not to support the vote on the budget motion. They wanted to do it later in the fiscal, they want to leave it as floating surplus rather than assigning it to the OPEB. And I was fine with that. It makes no difference if you do it now or if you do it in the future. So that's why it's highlighted in red.
Will that be the OPEB contribution we would expect from all the years?
We have $100,000 almost in our budget. So it'll be a total of $100,000.
But you can increase it.
We're gonna talk about that in a second. So now when we get to the overall surplus, I'm just showing you how well this town has done the last couple of years. We've had surpluses that exceed $5 million. That's a far cry from where in FY '20 when we had just over $2 million. Our current stabilization from last year sits at approximately 14.8% of our annual operating budget, which is not bad. You may recall that the Abrahams Group made a recommendation the county should strive for a stabilization balance set between 5% and up to 20% of its operating budget. I'm happy to inform you that if you elect to support the $1 million transfer into the stabilization this fiscal year, we will be at 17.85% of our operating budget under stabilization, very close to our capital. In addition, as I mentioned. In addition, we have
Okay. In the interest of the government, yes.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner.
So moving on, I mentioned the capital spending is funding our FY '23 and forward funding FY '24. Into our supplemental needs, starting with information technology, it's on budget now. We're recommending a new hire. Now, many of you may recall that the Abrams Group report recommended certain hires consistent with redundancy and cut ahead. Leaning on that report, being advised by it, our technology staff and I have worked towards recommending a new position of a network administrator. The annual salary would be $90,000 because we're funding it halfway through the year or so. A portion of it would be assigned to Registry Deeds Excise Fund, the other half would come from our supplemental. So you'll see on the first two lines, they're in green, and the green is coming from Registry Deeds Excise. In addition, we're requesting a certain piece of equipment exclusively for the registry. That includes two regal copiers, one plotter, one virtual co-server. And with those items, the total cost of the registry would be, as I said, assigned in green. At the very bottom, we're asking for $10,000 to customize the county Intranet web portal. We'll talk about that briefly. If you haven't been on our new website, please check it out. It's a big, big change from what it was. I want to give Bill Buckley all the credit in the world. He worked with the vendor over the last year to bring it to what it is. You're gonna find it to be very, very easy to navigate. But there's a feature in our website that I really want to build out for the benefit of the employees. It's an Intranet, accessible only by employees. And it's where we're gonna land all our policies, all our procedures, all our collective bargaining agreements, all our handbook provisions and other information that is approved by the commissioners and reused by the employees. It'll be, it'd be an excellent tool for document management and for people to understand in any given moment what the current proposals are. But we'll need some additional funding to support the customization buildout of that platform. The Wallace and Golf Course, we're asking for $75,000 to offset improvements that I think you'll hear Chairman Shea talk about shortly. Total cost of the project is $175,000. Your folks have already approved $100,000 last fiscal year. That 75 is gonna be offset by an earmark that Representative Bruce Ayers got into the FY '22 end-of-year budget. So we expect that money back from the state, but that might happen later in fiscal year '23, as you know, sometimes. But we'll need this money to close out our obligation. You'll hear from Chairman Shea later about the playground. It's going to be under construction, completed probably within a month. So this helps us make full on our obligation, we'll see the money back. In addition, we have the Granite Street course sign that needs $4,600 for installation completion as well as some hardware and plumbing supplies that were utilized as a result of a major irrigation line failure back in July, $10,000. Registry of deeds, earlier today, the commissioners voted to support $20,000 in legal services for the registry of deeds. Excuse me, I call that out in that purple box, just to show the folks assembly here, the Finance Committee was a two-to-one vote. The original request was 60,000. In addition, the register had asked for $32,000 to support consulting services. That contract was a three-year contract, was funded August 1st, 2021. It ended obviously financially June 30th, and it was supposed to renew on July 1st. But without funding, the contract was rendered null, and subsequently it's not in effect. If the board or the advisory board were to enact it, it would still be considered inactive because of the wording in the contract. It has to go back to the bit. Commissioners talked.
Quick question about that. You said it's a three-year contract started in '21, wouldn't that bring it to '24?
So the language would, normal, the language in that particular account, one second. Just read it to you. It's interesting language.
Guessing, yeah. I'm guessing it would be
So I'll read the language. This is under the multi-year contract section C. "A multi-year contract shall be canceled by the registry of deeds and the Norfolk County Commissioners after the first fiscal year if funds are not made available in the Norfolk County annual budget or continuance of this contract." Would you like to see the language?
Okay, good talking, thank you.
So the commissioners interpreted that to say, well, it wasn't funded and the contract is ended. So they desire to revisit the matter later in the year to possibly include or fund consulting services on behalf of the county commissioners. More on that later.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on, the Norfolk County Agricultural High School.
Can we go back to the registry of deeds on the legal services? You're proposing, why do you have 16 here?
That's the old version.
That's all the old.
Yeah, this is, we have one here, Paul, that is reflective of what was voted on today.
Thank you.
That key, that's part of the
He had the old one also.
Hey, Eric.
If it's double sided.
Thank you.
You good, Paul?
Yep.
All right, the, go ahead.
That's a recommendation for tonight.
We'll have to include that in our supplemental, correct? $20,000.
If you're willing to do so.
Correct. The Norfolk County Agricultural High School is looking for $100,000 to conduct a feasibility study for a new cafeteria. Facility of the high school in which the kids eat is, I believe, looked it up on the assessor's website, it was built in 1970. It's partially 40,000 square feet, beyond useful life, it has a lot of building structural issues. The school's desire is a complete understanding of what the building is currently, can it be renovated? And if so, what the cost and design may look like? And if so, if it's not reclaimable, it needs to be reconstructed. The path ahead, obviously, is gonna be defined by how much it costs to do any of the above. But the school's still compelled at this point to study this building because it is in such tough shape. And it's a major focal point and a need, space need of the schools going forward. So that is our only ask. And that, that value, by the way, is a tick on the higher end, from my experience. I compare the feasibility studies to other 40,000 square foot buildings. We may see bid results that are below $100,000, but this is the upper end of expectation. Regarding the advisory board, as you may know, the advisory board is seeking $20,000 to defend itself against a lawsuit brought by the registry of deeds. Excuse me, prior executive board meeting, March September.
So Paul, that's the executive
Moving on to maintenance, I'll go through these relatively quickly. The 614 High Street, the commissioner's office and the treasurer's office is looking for a bathroom renovation. This is a higher cost, you'll note, to renovate or gut these restrooms. We're gonna feature touchless features, and I expect approximately $25,000 out of the $125,000 to be used against ARPA. That'll come later, but that was a bid cost. We have difficulty finding people to do the work, so I think the price reflects the market. Quincy District Court needs free on work on cooling systems. The Brooklyn District Court needs new gutters and downspouts. If you're familiar with that building, it's
It's gotta be It's gotta be
You are correct, and thus the price.
The price.
Gutters and downspouts around that old building, $163,000. Stoughton District Court needs exterior lighting improvements. The registry boiler repair, this is a cost overrun from last year. Old River Place, this is the area behind District Court. The county has a building, a facility's uses, it's a, it looks like a colonial building. But we're looking to pay for the windows and the painting of that new facility. Windows will be installed by maintenance staff. Superior Court, as you may know, is being ready for rededication on October 19, 16. I believe, they've done a lot of work, obviously with the dome, we have the railings picked, and now we're gonna do some deep power washing. This cost is on the higher end because this is not your, as I would say, it's not your father's power washing. This is a hydro cleaning that seeks to remove all the stained elements left behind by the rust on the railings over the last several decades. And then finally, most of the court's in extensive basin re-pointing. Brenton, Dedham, and Superior will all receive approximately $34,649 repairs. Engineering ordered a van, I believe it was in FY '22. However, they were not able to get the van because of supply issues, and now they're getting a 2023 Ford with up charges, including the additional cost and a FEDO. So that's a $12,000 coverage. They need law books and survey books as well. The treasurer's office is going through a modest renovation, looking for $17,000 to put a new ceiling into that space. If you've been in there, they have the originals, acoustic pianos that are held up, I passed there, some of their own good shape, most of them are not. The commissioner's office is looking for $15,000 to cover unpaid bills for part of the years. And then finally, you'll note that we are carrying, as we did in FY '20, a 10% contingency on just the capital items listed above. That cost is reflected at 56. We did use a portion of that, a good portion, I think Anthony said almost all of it in FY '22. So it turned out to be an effective tool. I don't know what your experience, but in my town, we're doing the same thing, carrying 10%, but it seems to be the chasing number these days because of inflation. So overall, you'll see that even with the correction for deeds at 105, we're slated to spend approximately $757,000 I'm sorry, $787,000 in the above listed items. Please note that between the ARPA cost chargeback and the $75,000 for the earmark, you can pretty much deduct that down to approximately $687,000. Last fiscal year during the first supplemental, we spent $650,000. So scale-wise, we're very close to where we were last year. It'll still leave just under a half million dollars for us to use for the rest of the fiscal year. As you know, the December and eventually the May, the numbers tend to trend down as we get further into the fiscal year and start using capital resources. I just wanted to briefly talk about the OPEB liability. As you know, $57.05 billion was our liability in 2020. We've made some progress, as you can see, between FY '20, '21, '22, and what we proposed for FY '23. Obviously, what we're doing is not making a major dent in the liability, but it is making what's called regular and recurring payments. And that's what our auditors want to see, they want to see that you have a commitment towards the liability, and that's sufficient for them at this time. So observations ahead, just to upnote, the debt of Superior Court will be dedicated on October 16 to for Bellon, our county capital, ARPA plan includes a new boiler, heating systems, and Brenton District Court. We're gonna be exploring efficient and green alternatives through a roundtable discussion with the state and their engineers. We'll be conducting that discussion. We've completed approximately 33% of our financial services, college, art, and the Abrahams Group. We still have some work remaining, which includes FY '24 budget prep for infinite visions, as well as the new internal control plan, which you may remember is a financial document of significance that is the missing link between policies that the Abrahams Group report gave us and how our financial team is supposed to conduct their work. So Mark is working on that right now, should have that in the next month or two. Quincy District Court site appraisal is completed. We're not at liberty to discuss the contents of that publicly, but the county has engaged with Commonwealth for the next steps. And we're attempting to adhere to Master General Law Chapter 30B as well as 7, 7C, and Chapter 34, Section 31.
And that's gonna be our future, Jeff?
Sure, as things emerge, we are in the beginning dialogue stage. We've also contracted with Collins Group. See Michelle Blavatini here tonight, our human resources director is delighted. Not only do we have a new hire onboard, but we're also moving towards employee handbook and update of the same, the first update since 1987. The county has been in negotiations with three ASME units for a three-year contract. We're projecting an agreement this fall. Pushing hard to get to the endgame, we've been in negotiations for about six months. And we'll coordinate the financial impact with you and the advisory board. Hopefully, an upcoming meeting, if it has to be a pop-up meeting, I'll ask, if it has to wait till December, it has to wait till December. It's our goal to let you know as soon as it's ready for your attention. The Wallace and recreational facility will have a new playground this fall. I know later on Chairman Shea is gonna ask to speak a little bit about the improvements the county's made towards this property. But we're delighted that with this new state earmark, we're gonna see an immediate improvement right out front of the player. That concludes my presentation and supplemental at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, further questions, Eric?
The other question I have is on the back page of this supplemental, there is a note saying that we require a motion to amend the fiscal '23 registry of deeds appropriation from 3.4 to 3.5, do we need to make that motion?
So you do, there are two votes that are before you tonight, that is one, and thank you for drawing attention to that. I just wanted to point out that when I met with the advisory board in the spring to oppose the FY '23 budget, we projected the spending of the registry of deeds based on actuals through February. And I told people that we would come back once the actuals were known, but now we know what the actuals are. And as a result, the register's appropriation needs to go up by $94,000 and some change. So your appropriation will help identify what the new level is for appropriation. Within this document, Eric, the commissioners have elected option two, which is to fund the network administrator cost at half, as well as the equipment noted, the total $94,192.
Okay.
So you're gonna increase the appropriation through your motion, and then when you vote for the sup, it will move those expenses into that cost against the registry budget.
Okay, that also includes, on that option two, does that include the $20,000?
It does not, the $20,000 will come strictly out of Registry of deeds excise fund, it's a supplemental. Six of one, Paul. It's a six of one answer, that's how we're gonna You have two motions to make.
So it sounds like the first motion is actually the registry to increase the total.
Yes.
And then the second motion is to approve the supplemental components.
Yes.
I don't have any further questions.
All right, how about you, Paul?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm first on the second one, I'm voting against the $20,000.
Okay, right, so we can
So that's gonna be on the second motion.
When we get to the second motion, what is that? Okay, can I ask just one question about the money that comes back to us from the state? Like for the playground, for example, small dollars, but when that comes back in, does that automatically go back into the same line that we took this out of? Where does it come, how does the, how does it flow?
It'll come, Josie, right into general fund.
Okay, all right, so it's, so the, so we will show an expense out of that line item. But we will have, over our total, it'll be back in general fund. Okay, got it, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, all right, I think, I think, are any other questions from Finance Committee?
Eric, do you want the, do you want to make the motion, Eric, on the registry of deeds appropriation?
Yeah, let me start with that.
We've got a, we've got a, you wanna
Bigger print or smaller print, your choice.
I can read it from here. Fine, fine. So I will make a motion to require, to amend the fiscal '23 registry of deeds appropriation from $3,421,869.75 to $3,516,062.26.
Do you have a second, please?
Second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Can you hold for a second?
Yep. Make sure we're right.
Give me one second, please.
Yeah, sure. We're taking a little consultation break. I think we still have, we still, we have zero. Who are we getting named? So we don't have to take that, we don't have to settle on that until after we do this? So we can actually
This, this piece, let me go in for something, I just
Yeah, we're gonna go on a little Yes.
Checking down the FY '22, excuse me, the FY '23 original
The dollar amount? Okay, all right.
Difference between what I have.
We're just double checking the dollar amount. Want to have our decimals correct.
Always, move one decimal.
Yeah, exactly, decimals have to be right. Finance Committee just like
I could sit over there inside if you want.
No, 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 it's fine. I think it's better for the recording. It's better for the recording. We're at the bust. What's, what is, what are the correct numbers?
If I could refer you to the original FY '23 number for the registry, I have shown on the page as 3421869.75.
Yep, I have that.
It's the mandated figure.
Okay.
And it's gonna go to 35.6062.26.
Yep, that's what I made the motion for.
Yep, we had a different number on our
So we're good.
Right, we were good, we made the correct motion.
So the motion I made
And seconded, so now we have to vote on that first motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, all right, that motion passes unanimously to approve the, to increase the registry of deeds appropriation for FY '23 from 3421869.75 to 3516062.26. Okay, all right, now the second motion is perhaps more complicated. The second motion.
Yeah, so I'm gonna
So I could, how about, you keep this relatively simple.
May I just ask one question before we start that supplemental? Because I think this question is gonna come up later too. The request, and the commissioners voted the $20,000 for the registry for legal fees. Can someone remind me what was already in the budget for legal fees?
$7,000.
$7,000, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, okay.
Very briefly, I neglected to inform you that in addition to the supplemental items, there are two transfers within the budget.
All right.
One is for $6,737 within the recreational facility. And also, there is a $39,400 shift in the technology budget to afford additional temp, contract work. So those two items. Overall, we have a number, and I believe it's custom of the board, of what's to vote the overall.
Yeah.
So if you'd like to write down what I have currently, if you approved everything the way it's been presented, your motion would be to approve $2,000, excuse me, $2,00938.838.31. Can you repeat that?
.31?
Yes, $2938.838.31.
Okay.
Was it several?
As presented, so if you decide to change anything, just deduct from that, okay? Or add, whatever you choose.
Actually, I'm not sure if that's straightforward to me, John, because I thought the budget request was for $77,507.9.
Right, we're also moving money
Oh, yes, got it, okay, it's including all of that. Okay, fine, okay, fine. All right, so that does it, okay.
So I will make a motion to approve a supplemental fiscal '23 supplemental budget request as presented by the director.
For the $2,938.838.
For the amount of $2,938,838.31.
Okay, all right, we have a second for that motion.
I could further amend that.
Okay.
Eliminate the registry of deeds legal service money of $20,000.
Okay, now we have an amendment. Okay, we have a second for the amendment.
So that would make it 9, 18. 918.
Eight, eight.
I'll second the amendment.
You'll second the amendment, okay. So we're gonna vote the amendment first, and then we'll vote the main motion, so Yes.
I think that if we don't fund it, there's a good possibility we could drop it soon, and we won't have to fund the other one later on. I don't, I'm not spending any money to save the can't save it, it shouldn't happen, it shouldn't happen to anybody. It's bullying, gotta stop.
Can I ask the directors, who are not on us only because we've got two lines here, the $20,000?
Your Finance Committee makes a recommendation to the advisory board, prior to the advisory board having a discussion like this, you'll be hearing from General Counsel, like Counsel Scott Lopez in executive session. So your vote today is advisory, binding vote later with the advisory board. And I would defer that kind of conversation, Eric, to them, to your board. I think if we're looking at financial, that's the way you feel it should be voting. And it can be addressed later on by the advisory board after you give the counsel. On the pros and cons.
I might, I might also point out that we will go into executive session with Scott Lopez prior to going to supplemental budget. So from an agenda perspective, we'll have the opportunity to have that conversation before we actually have to vote this. So we could make an organization from our Finance Committee, that is one thing, and we'll present why we thought that. And then there may be discussion after the executive session that suggests we even change it, so.
All right, so we have a motion to amend on second.
We have an amendment to strike the $20,000 that goes to the registry for legal fees, okay. I think we should vote that amendment.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, Eric's second.
He's second, he's second in the motion, I'm second.
All right, all those in favor of striking the $20,000? I will go along with that, so it's a unanimous vote to strike the $20,000.
Yes, so I will amend my original motion
Okay. Okay.
To approve, or to recommend to the full Advisory Board the fiscal 23 supplemental budget request for a total of $2,918,838.31.
I'll second.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll vote the main motion. All those in favor of that main motion?
Aye.
So unanimous vote. Okay. So the Finance Committee recommendation that we're gonna report out, but I know we got it out of the Hall of Fame at the whole Advisory Board meeting, is that the Finance Committee recommends FY '23 supplemental budget request minus, without the $20,000, for the registry. Okay, all right.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting minutes, Rob.
We have meeting minutes, yes. We have our meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes Wednesday, August 17th, which was Finance Committee, yeah, Finance Committee's amendment.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes pass unanimously. Okay. Any topics that we did not anticipate that we need to discuss? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Finance Committee adjourns. Thank you. We will come back together at 7:30 for the main Norfolk County Advisory Board meeting. We're gonna call the roll.
All right, Avon is here. Bellingham. Brantree.
Yeah.
Brookline.
Here.
Canton.
Yes.
Cohasset. Dedham.
Yeah.
Dover. Foxborough.
Here.
Franklin.
Yeah.
Holbrook. Medfield. Medway. Millis. Milton. Needham.
Here.
Norfolk. Norwood. Plainbill.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Randolph.
Here.
Sharon.
Yeah.
Stoughton.
Here.
Walpole. Wellesley.
Here.
Westwood. Waymoth. Rentham.
Seventy-three point five seven.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we start, let's say the pledge and gather. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I just want to introduce Chairman Shea. We are here on your, in your territory, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. Before I start with some quick introductions, and then I'm gonna keep my comments to the golf course since we're here, and we have a lot of activity going on. I want to mention that we're on Quincy Cable tonight. We welcome them and we invited them, so we'll act accordingly. Thank you. Good evening. This, and I'm gonna introduce everyone that is here from the staff, and then we got a couple of brief comments about changes that are coming or have already started at the golf course. We're here tonight with Carl Minor, Director of the Golf Course, and our Assistant Director of Club Pro, Dana Smith. I think for the first time formally, I want to introduce John Martin, who's our Superintendent of the Schools. And we've had several meetings at his facility. Treasurer Bellotti is here. Assistant Treasurer Joe De Oria is here. Bill O'Donnell is here with two staff members, Marguerite, First Assistant, and Ed Wheeler. And of course, our ever-present staff, John Mullin, County Director, Bill Buckley. John Mullin. I got it half right, John.
That's good stuff.
We've been in a mood to, we've been blaming Mike Mullin for anything went wrong.
It wasn't him.
Michelle Laberdini, our Human Resource Specialist. And I didn't lose Phil before I introduced John Mullin. Okay, welcome. Thank you. We're always thankful for what the Advisory Board does for the county. I will mention at the outset, also, County Attorney Scott Lopez is with us tonight. I know he probably wishes he was somewhere else, but he's with us, and we want to welcome him. I don't know if you noticed on your way in that the City of Quincy put a whole new street with a sidewalk, granite curves, et cetera. About a year and a half ago, Carl and I toured the golf course with Mayor Tom Coke of Quincy. And Mayor Coke's history is, before he was mayor, he was park director. So he's everything trees, everything open space, and in a very nice way, he said, you know, what about this, what about that? And then we said, well, what about this, what about that? So we agreed, and some of the stuff is ongoing. So the new street bought and paid for by the City of Quincy, which is fine. This hundred-acre facility is, I say this for Commissioner Collins' behalf, it's half in Quincy and half in Milton. A hundred, ninety-eight plus acres. The heartbeat, the guts, the facilities are all in Quincy. But, under our capital budget approved this year, we have a maintenance facility roof of $50,000, a new restroom on the golf course, $75,000. We're gonna repave, fix this parking lot, and reline it, and try to gather some more parking. That's $200,000. And we have ongoing golf course ground improvement. Each year, Carl usually brings in a hole that's gonna be rebuilt, redone, and he tries to keep ahead of it, all under the public bidding process. And that's it, that figure is $80,000. That money's all in the capital budget. In our regular budget, in some form or another, is a new walkway and two new walkways on the 14th and 15th tee. The new staircase to the 15th hole, which has been changed considerably. We need a new extension, which is $10,000. We need some cabling work, which is $4,600. We're gonna do it. And we need a tee time software package, which was a product of the Abraham's Report in order to help Carl and Dana keep track of the golfers. There's a new seat of fence going somewhere in the property, it's $15,000. Pickleball renovations. This is a recreation facility, it isn't only a golf course. We have other, other venues that we supply. Pickleball is new, but one of our courts had been converted to pickleball. Now we're gonna redo the pickleball court. It's the last one in the line of the tennis courts. The pickleball people are very fervent, they're new, but I believe they're here to stay. So we're working with the pickleball people.
Exactly.
There's all new signage out here, out on the front, and there is a sign out on Granite Ave in Milton, and it's part of the same package that you see out here, but it is not up yet. We have to build a new stanchion, but that's $8,500. And then there is some discussion about new lighting. We had a long winter here, there was three or four breaks in the middle of the winter, and it was in the maintenance facility, so we have to make some changes there. There's some discussion in new lighting. But the capital part that we agreed with Mayor Coke about is, I don't know if anyone's noticed, when you come in to the left, it's the left of this building, but it's behind the parking lot. There is, there is some swings. There are some picnic tables there, and there are some benches. Going out on a limb to tell you that you can't sit on the benches, you'd be probably taking your life in your hands if you swing, use the swings. And that whole hill is gonna be reconstructed with those trees. So that's all coming out, and there's gonna be a new, a new titty tart park, which will be done. I'm gonna walk the limb and say before November 1st of this year. We're paying for some of it. The Great General Court gave us $75,000. So we want to thank Quincy Delegation, Lucy has brought it in, and it went right through, and they have delivered. This is a company that's Massachusetts-based company, they bid, this is their rendering of what's gonna go there, along with new benches, which are in that other batch of money. So this is the first, some of these things are done, but this is the first new thing that we're gonna see, and we'll have some sort of public presentation and invite it. So we, on only a golf course, the county commissioners in the 1970s, in their wisdom, I believe Peter's father was the chairman, bought this golf course from the old Lawson Golf Course, which is new development, as you know. We've looked at a clubhouse, Charlie Ryan reminds me to look at it again, and we are, but it's not in this money that I spoke to you about, but we're turning a corner here. I think they're having a good year. I know they are, and daylight today, only, only supports that. I want to greet everyone, and I want to say one thing, and leaving at, I'm so fortunate to be working with Peter Collins, person who has the history of the county down very well, and past history of the board, and I find it very helpful. And of course, I welcome Commissioner Stady, who is in his first term, but he brings the enthusiasm that he displayed long ago to all of you as a member, not only of the Canton Board Selectmen, but Canton's representative on the Advisory Board. I don't know how he did over thirty years, but in that in itself qualifies him for a lot of things now. I think he's passed the torch. Not to Mr. Paul Connors, or, well, he passed the Canton torch-
John Connors.
To John Connors.
John Connors.
But I think Paul is the most senior man now. Would love to him.
He's always back there.
Oh, I thought you should, your chair's over here, isn't it? Oh, okay, all right. So that's my comments. Again, we can't say thank you enough. It's exciting. The addition of this so-called Opera Funds, as we call them, is going very, very well. I think as of today, we have another, another award to the town of Milton. Out of our designated, is it 236?
137.
137. We're at $25 million, and it's going very well. And please, tell your selectmen, tell your town managers, tell your executive secretaries, your finance board, put it in. If it, if it doesn't go around the first round, we have people who are working, our accountants and lawyers, and they're working very well. Don't, don't hesitate, because if it's, if it's off a little, and it doesn't conform with the federal regs, and there are a lot of them, we'll work with you. They send it back, you can come back. We're back and forth. I think we're on the cusp of a very, hopefully next week, we're gonna finish up a large award to the town of Stoughton. And this is the charge we've been given. It was all new to us a year and a half ago, but we're well into it, and so far it's going good, so. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. I just want to thank you, Treasurer Bellotti, for coming by. It's really nice of you to be here. And hopefully those ceiling tiles are gonna work. Hopefully your ceiling tiles are gonna help.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay. All right. I just want to also tell the board, unfortunately, Joe Gruden sends his regrets, he's unable to be here tonight, and so I am pinch hitting. And so those of you who are very knowledgeable about how this works, you'll just have to help me out. All right. We, our next item of business, thank you, Commissioner Shea, is our next item of business is the executive session. And this is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. And the Chair is declaring, that's me, that there is, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, as the Chair so declares. So I would appreciate it if I could have a motion to go into executive session.
Sure.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we do have to take a vote on this. All right. So all you parliamentarians, this does not have to be a roll call, or it does have to be a roll call? It does, because it's executive session. Okay, okay, thank you very much. Eric, go for it.
Avon, go aye.
Stand by.
I'm sorry.
It's a little intimidating to have a room full of parliamentarians and try to do this up here, let me tell you. Ready.
All right, Avon votes aye. Bellingham. Brantree.
Aye.
Brookline.
Aye.
Canton.
Yes.
Cohasset. Dedham.
Yes.
Dover. Foxborough.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Holbrook. Medfield. Medway. Millis. Milton. Needham. Norfolk. Norwood. Plainbill.
Yes.
Quincy.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yeah.
Stoughton.
Yes.
Walpole. Wellesley.
Yes.
Westwood. Waymoth. Rentham.
Sir Phil.
Waymoth is not here.
Is Waymoth here?
Yeah. I had him here. Still. Sixty-eight point two.
Okay, all right.
Sixty-eight point one.
Sixty-eight point one, the motion passes. Okay, we are now going to go into executive session. Okay. We are back in open session. I want to thank the-
Are you all set up?
I want to thank all the people here, all the patrons here. Thank you for being so patient with us while we did our executive session. Okay. Now that we are back in executive session, we do need to take a couple votes following in the open meeting, following the conversation which we had in executive session. These are votes in the open public meeting. So I would, I would like to, I would like a motion to appoint Scott Lopez as counsel to the Norfolk County Advisory Board for the purpose of representing us as a defendant in the case with the register of deeds. Is that correct?
So move.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. This does not have to be a roll call vote, correct? It does not, okay, thank you, okay, all right? It does not, right? Okay, all right. Okay, all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, the second issue we will deal with as part of the FY '23 budget, is that correct? Okay, yes, is part of the FY '23 budget, which is the funding for the representation. Okay, so now we are moving on to the FY '23 budget. And I think we're gonna start with you, Director Cronin, and we will get some background, and then we will proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Charles. Can everybody hear me okay? I'll try to speak up and be free. For your packets in preparation of the meeting, you were given a spreadsheet that was titled "The FY '23 Supplemental Budget Request." Earlier today, the commissioners took a vote on an amendment to that document. Hopefully, when you walked in this evening, you received a one-pager, two sides. That's the updated version. I encourage you to grab that, that would be the master sheet. So again, this would be the item I'll speak to this evening. In addition, I have a PowerPoint deck that looks like this. If you have a copy, that's great, you can follow along. I would just like you to appreciate, these are screenshots from the supplemental budget spreadsheet. You may see some inconsistencies in the PowerPoint, because this was done yesterday. Apologies. Bottom line, and the vote that you'll take will be against the spreadsheet. Okay, ready, understand? So I'm gonna use this PowerPoint for ease of communication in explaining what the position of the county is and what our requests are. The vote will be against the spreadsheet. I'll proceed. Can anybody hear me okay? We good? So good. Okay. So as we begin, our agenda will feature an FY23 financial overview, including a surplus plan discussion, stabilization plan, capital plan, supplemental needs, and our OPEB plan. We'll also talk about FY23 observations ahead, a brief discussion on the information technology consolidation, and finally, the American Rescue Plan Act. In FY23, we are realizing a surplus from FY22 that totaled $5,39,425.48. From that, we are forward funding $600,000 in our FY23 budget that you approved on May 11. Consequently, our operating surplus is adjusted to $4,439,425. This evening, I'm recommending that we transfer $1 million to our stabilization account, $1 million to our capital spending plan for FY23, and $1 million forward funding for the FY24 capital budget. That results in a FY23 supplemental budget of $1,239,425. It is from this number that we'll be discussing the draw of the following supplemental items. Last week, the commissioners evaluated whether or not to commit the $200,000 that is proposed to be spent towards our OPEB liability. The commissioners elected to put off that vote until later in the fiscal year, so for now, that'll sit unassigned, but I expect to come back through this board after discussing it with the commissioners. Likely in the spring, we will move $200,000 or so to our OPEB liability. And I'll talk about that liability piece in just a minute. Overall, our financial stabilization is in very good shape. The Abrahams Group Financial Plan, Section 4.5, recommended that our county stabilization be no less than 5% or greater than 20% of our operating budget. Last year, our current, our stabilization fund balance of 4.9 million represented 14.8% of our operating budget. With this transfer of $1 million, we'll elevate the fund balance to $5.9 million, just under 18%, nearly our cap of 20%. Regarding our FY23 capital plan that was proposed to the commissioners in September of 2021, it was approved in June of 2022. We are looking forward to filing the proposed FY24 capital plan later this month to the commissioners, and we will fund it later this year. Onto the supplemental needs. Now, again, I just want to inform you, you may see some slight inconsistencies between the PowerPoint and the spreadsheet. Spreadsheet rules. Okay? Supplemental. I will go quickly, if there's any questions. Do you want to hold them until the end? Is that your choice, Manager?
That'd be great. Can we hold questions till the end? Just make a note to yourselves, and we'll do them all at the end. Okay.
You'll see some items that are noted in green. Those are items that would be attributed as cost against the Registry of Deeds Excise Fund. In this matter, the supplemental needs from information technology include the request for a new position. The advisory board may recall that the Ripples Group delivered a report to the county this past spring, made several recommendations, including hires. After discussion with our technology team, we are recommending a new hire, the network administrator. We're proposing an annual salary of $90,000 when pro-rated for FY23, will cost $55,000. Excuse me, my eyesight's failing me. Should have worn my glasses. And I can't read the balance. The cost of that FY23 will be split between the county cost and through supplemental and the registry share through registry deeds excise, $27,692.51. The Information Technology Division also requests two RICO copiers for the Registry of Deeds, that'll be 100% funded from deeds excise, one plotter for the Registry of Deeds, and to replace one virtual host server. And then finally, we're looking to customize the county, the new county internet web portal. Some of you may have seen our new county website. If you haven't, I encourage you to log on. We're looking to activate a portal which will allow employees of the county to go in and see all updated procedures, policies, benefit information, collective bargaining agreements, and anything that's related to policies. This will be a landing spot that many of us have experienced in our other professional obligations, and this will be a new tool for employees to utilize going forward. We'll need to customize that. We're asking for $10,000. Walsen Golf Course, as Commissioner Shea started this evening talking about the golf course, we're going to have to forward fund $75,000 to complete the obligation of the new playground out front. That is an earmark that we will receive from the state later this fiscal year, so you're just prepaying it now, we'll get the credit later. This becomes a wash. The Granite Street Core Sign needs $4,600 more to complete the installation, as Commissioner Shea said. A portion of that was previously funded. We now need to relocate it onto the golf course, pour footings, and correctly install it. In July, the golf course experienced a pretty significant main irrigation water failure. The cost of that was $10,000. We're looking to recoup that cost for that repair. Please note that this PowerPoint includes the original request of $60,000 for registry legal services, and $32,000 for legislative advocacy services. Earlier today, the commissioners voted to support $20,000 legal services, for the registry. They elected not to fund the $32,000 for the legislative advocacy services. So that's a change from the PowerPoint to your spreadsheet. The Norfolk County Agricultural High School is requesting $100,000 to conduct a feasibility study for a new cafeteria. John Martin was here earlier, I believe he may have gone, but Ed Little's here. Thank you, Chairman. The school's cafeteria was built, I believe, in 1970. It's a 40,000 square foot space. It is well beyond useful life. It has chronic roof issues, heating issues, cooling issues. It's a major problem for the schools from an operational standpoint. This feasibility study will examine the current condition of the space, whether it's worth it to renovate it, or should we look at new construction. So the feasibility will touch on all corners of design, as well as recommendations for future use. Our maintenance facility has several items in play, including new restrooms at 614 High Street. Please note that this cost, which is a hard quote, may include items that are reimbursable through the American Rescue Plan Act. The ARPA grant does feature payments for certain services that promote good hygiene, obviously, good air circulation. We're looking at approximately $25,000 of that cost to come back through the ARPA grant once the work is done, so that you could possibly experience another $25,000 credit once that work is completed. The Quincy District Court requires a new freon work. Brookline District Court requires gutters and downspouts, $163,000. That cost may appear to be high, but I want to remind folks, if they're not familiar with the court, that is an older court, has beautiful architecture, like many of our courts do. These are copper gutters and copper downspouts, and they will encompass the entire facility. Stoughton District Court needs improved exterior lighting pursuant to the Chief Justice request. We had a cost overrun on the registry boiler repair from FY22 of $23,900. The county owns a small building, house, if you will, behind District Court. It's called the Blue House, an older place. We purchased new windows costing $7,978. Those will be installed by maintenance staff assigned to the county this winter. We're also received a quote to paint this building, which is in very tough shape in terms of paint, and that cost would be $17,500. I believe this board approved a new roof for that building last year, and that has already been installed. We require extensive masonry work at Rentham, Dedham, and Superior Court, mainly repointing of the stairs and areas where a lot of the masonry has failed. That cost is $34,649. Our engineering department has previously requested a van purchase. It ran into a supply issue associated with the delivery of a 2022 4T250. They now have been told they can only procure a 2023 4T250. There is an upcharge. If you haven't bought a car lately, I think you know what this is all about. In addition, they require some fit out of that car, that vehicle, it will cost $12,000. In addition, the engineering department requests $2,000 for civil and survey law books. The Treasurer's Office is requesting $17,199 for a new ceiling installation. If you haven't been in the Treasurer's Office, they have an original ceiling with ceiling tiles that are falling off, that are adhered to with mastics. This will create a drop ceiling grid for them to have a more improved lighting experience with LED and more sensible lighting. The Commissioner's Office has the need to fund FY22 unpaid bills totaling $15,000. And FY22, a year ago, when I was before you, we talked about the supply stream issues associated with a lot of the capital bids and costs we were experiencing. We were chasing the market. Many of you are involved in your local communities, you're probably doing the same thing. We are my community. We put in place a 10% upcharge for contingency on any of these items, and it worked. We used a fair amount of that in FY22. We're asking, again, in FY23, for your consideration of funding $56,207 that is only on the capital items. That does not apply to feasibility studies and things like that. So overall, we're looking to spend approximately $964,701. It would be offset by $177,192 associated with the Registry of Deeds Fund. So in total, the county is asking for $787,508 out of the surplus. Last fiscal year, at this time, you folks approved a first supplemental that totaled $650,000. If we back out the cost of the $75,000 for the earmark and the $25,000 expected to come back from ARPA, that's about $100,000, we would be spending roughly $687,000 or near what we were a year ago. So scale-wise, we're very close to where we were in FY22. It'll leave us with just under a half a million, $451,000 to address the remaining issues associated with obligations in FY23. Looking ahead, I do like to take the opportunity with the advisory board present, as I did with the commissioners earlier, to go through observations ahead. These are items that are beyond the supplemental, but of interest to you. Please note that the Dedham Superior Court Dome Project has been completed. Came out quite nice. We're very happy with the product. The Dedham Superior Court will be dedicated on October 16, 2022, to former Congressman William Delany. The county capital plan includes new boilers and heating systems for Rentham District Court. One of the items that we're running into is the unique way that our courts are heated. Many of them are older. Rentham, for example, is steam heat. And one of the items that ARPA features is the ability to offset the cost of providing improved air circulation. Steam heat does not, you know, circulate air, but it does promote the possibility of using an inefficient burner that goes in front of the steam. My friend from Mass Maritime standing in the back has a much better jargon to explain boilers and steam heats, things like that, than I could. Charlie, it's all yours if you want to take that. Other than that, I hope you understand, we're going to be looking for use of ARPA money to offset some of the improvements that our heating systems need in the courthouses, using ARPA funds. Quincy District Court site appraisal has been completed and received by the commissioners. We are keeping the value of that range confidential at this time. We have engaged with the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, and we will proceed legally through Chapter 7, 7C, Chapter 30B, and 34, Section 14. The state and the county have similar but competing general laws on how to dispose of property, so I'll be using the services of Scott Lopez as we deal with county, excuse me, with Commonwealth over the next several months. I think it's safe to say that we are measured in many months before we see the disposition of that court, likely one to two years. Things can change as we expect the transition of government at the state level. Incoming new governors have a way of slowing things down, so we'll see how that impacts the process ahead. Administratively, the county has contracted with the Collins Group to prepare a new employee handbook. The product will replace the 1987 version and align with school policies and collective bargaining agreements. The county has been in negotiations with three ASME units for new three-year contract for the last six months. We're hoping an agreement for these particular contracts will be in place this fall. We'll coordinate the financial impact with the advisory board chair for the timing of this next meeting. If we happen to accelerate and get closure on these contracts before your December meeting, I'll work with your advisory board chair for a possible advisory board pop-up meeting to approve that impact. Otherwise, we'll wait until December. And then finally, the Walsen recreational facility, as Commissioner Shea indicated, will have a new playground this fall, previous county appropriation coupled with the state earmark. We'll fund this new feature, and additional improvements include, as Commissioner Shea said, a new maintenance facility roof, extensive new parking lots, and a new restroom. I'd like to now move, Mr. and Madam Chair, if you'd mind, into the remaining pieces of the presentation.
I'll go right ahead.
Regarding the information technology consolidation update, as the board understands, consolidation occurred on July 1, 2022. The tasks undertaken to date include an assessment of current conditions, that includes current obligations, contracts, and services. We defined a strategy of collaboration through weekly meetings, open dialogue. We drafted a plan, a memorandum of agreement for the work ahead, and we furthermore did an assessment of current duties, contract obligations, that help reveal any risk involved with current conditions. That's how we started the fiscal year. So since then, what have we been up to? So we completed cross-training with existing staff to ensure backup and coverage during periods of absences. Per the recommendations of the Ripples Group, we prepared a new position request of the network administrator. We planned temporary worker backfill to fill the role of the desktop support, previously temp vacated on September 2. And per the Ripples Group report, we planned for and completed a full county penetration test of our firewall. Results were favorable with minor remedies needed. Regarding the Chief Information Officer position, on May 11, the advisory board approves the consolidation. On May 17, we posted the CIO position. We received over 15 applications. On June 22, we started interviewing four candidates for the Chief Information Officer position, and on July 31, the commissioners promoted Dan Caparata to interim CIO. Dan, as you know, may know, is assigned to the registry. We advanced two candidates to the final round. One candidate was not recommended for hire following the second round. The second candidate prevailed. On August 15, we extended an offer to the preferred candidate with conditional approval of increased wage rate by the advisory board on August 17, which you did provide. I regret to inform you, yesterday, September 13, after extensive negotiations with the candidate, he has withdrawn. He was looking for more progressive remote participation, remote work options, if you will, for this position, and withdrew. We have reposted the position with a new wage range of $129,000 to $145,000. We've expanded our search area. We have received additional resumes, and I'm happy to report tomorrow, with Chuck Phelan's help, we'll be conducting another round of interviews. Moving on. The American Rescue Plan Act. Briefly, the county was awarded $137,282,760 in ARPA funds. Our first award was made on December 1, 2021, to the great town of Dover. I'm showing you a breakout of where the funds are used. This is on our website. If you chose to go on the new county website, you'll see a description of each award. I've actually handed those out as part of your packet, and you can see overwhelmingly, most of our communities are using their funds for infrastructure purposes. Few other facts, and then I'll wrap this up. Chairman? Sure. So Chairman Shea indicated, to date, the county commissioners have awarded $25,737,785.84. These awards have been distributed to 17 of the 28 cities and towns. Norfolk County Portal has received exactly 100 applications as of today from 20 of the 28 communities. And just a reminder, administratively, the county's withheld 3% of the grant with a breakout of 2.5% for administering the grant for auditors, legal services, and salaries, and 0.5% or $685,000 for eligible project costs for the county. I want to remark, I think I mentioned to you before in prior meetings, Norfolk County has the lowest administrative fee of any of the counties in Massachusetts. That is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. We have several items of business included in the director's report. The first one is the FY23 supplemental budget. The second one is the report that we have requested from the director at each of our meetings about the IT consolidation. Yes.
When will it be appropriate to address the IT matter?
We're going to do that. That'll be the second item after the FY23.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the third, the third item is the ARPA follow-up in case there are questions. So let's take them in the order that they are on the agenda. Let's start with the FY23 supplemental budget request. Yes, Mr. Padula?
Just one question.
Yeah.
On the backside, the unpaid bills, what was that amount again?
$15,000, I think.
Yeah. The updated version is $15,000. Okay. So I must have grabbed a little one.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. Okay. So the first item is the FY23 supplemental budget request, as presented to us and approved by the commissioners today. And I want to report out to you about the finance committee. Yes, Mr. Palito?
Question the budget. Is that our...
We're going to go right to it. So yes, you can go right ahead.
The issue on the merchandise, are those profit utilities charged, those used across the registry? Or...
Under the supplemental IT. Okay. We can ask that question? Yes.
Is there normal in the budget, or they're new, or the charge over the years?
to us and approved by the commissioners today, and I want to report out to you about the finance committee. Yes, Mr. Palito? We're going to go right to it. So yes, you can go right ahead.
The issue on the merchandise, are those cost utilities charged, those user costs charged registry or all that?
Under the supplemental IT, okay. We can ask that question? Yes, can we ask?
There's no amount in the budget or there's no charge over the years?
Are you referring to the copier, the plotter?
No, the green.
Yep, those are in green.
Yeah.
As well as, those are costs that would be assigned directly and for the exclusive use of the registry.
So that was the normal charge if you bought it, if you charged it the same way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
The other question is Dover County School. I see you're a pre-builder study for a cafeteria. These all have a debt. My understanding, it never came before the trustees. Never came to vote in discussion with trustees. Why didn't it come to, why wasn't the trustees involved in discussion? I want to debate, we don't need that, this bill.
Got it, okay.
It should be, to me, if the summit at the school should come for a trustee for us, then the commissioners and then to us.
Okay.
My understanding, it didn't go to trustees, and that's my issue. I'm not against that, but the profit use is flawed. You talk about some go is flawed, this is a flawed situation to me. Do you have any thought on that issue?
Yeah. Mr. Litt, would you like to speak to that at all?
No.
Okay, all right, okay. Mr. Crone, just a minute.
So generally, Mr. Palito is right. We would expect the board in this case to be aware of, the trustees to be aware of the cost. We don't control their agenda. The trustees are controlled by the chair and the school superintendent. The superintendent asked for this particular item, so we're carrying it based on their ask and the commissioner's approval, which, as you know, include three trustees. The omission is, I don't mean to direct it back to the chairman, but the omission of the trustee vote is on them. We proceed unilaterally without them in this case.
Well, maybe should be put off to the meeting, maybe do it the proper way. I'm saying, yeah, it's circumventing the rules. The rules, yeah, I'm not saying the rules aren't. The process should be done that way then. If you get the chair and the trustee to know by then, guess what? Put it off to a next meeting and do it the proper way. Let them hear it out, let them give their opinion. Right now, we have one person's opinion, the superintendent's director. Let's have the whole trustees make their decision, and then go to the commissioners and make their decision. It's all one people, commissioners and them are the same people. Freedom, not all set. So I'm about to know because I think the procedure is flawed. The study, we won't end there, we know it needs work, but the process wasn't flawed. We always talk about process here. We always talk about process, it wasn't done right. This was done right, so we should look at the process and follow the right way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palito. Would the commissioners like to say anything about this item as well? Anything you'd want to say? Commissioner Shea?
Tom is right, it did not go before the school board, so to speak. I think, as John said, we put it on there because they requested it.
Okay.
I don't disagree on whether the board should hear it. I will say that when we talk about the cafeteria, the only thing I'd like to say is it's also the library. And our agencies that oversee mass secondary of schools, et cetera, have written us time again to say that our cafeteria is way, way below grade and way before what's acceptable for a high school of this size. So cafeteria building is really cafeteria and library, so it's very important. I mean, I
Okay, thank you.
I see no reason there probably, the superintendent was here, I don't want to
You have one move in the second session.
I agree with Tom.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner. Okay, all right. Other points about the FY '23 supplemental budget? Other points people would like to raise? Please, Mr. Palito, yes?
Say you build $15,000. What happened, why they, what happened, came in late?
Mr. Crone?
I don't know.
Nope, that's exactly right. We received late invoices for obligations beyond the reserve point in late August. So these are, there are a variety of bills involved here. I think many of them are HVAC. Many of them are from our HVAC vendor, so they're
It was a thousand to 15,000, small mine to 15,000.
Yep, we received, through our procurement department, we received additional bills that came in relative to, as I said, our HVAC vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, late invoices.
Mr. Ryan?
Thank you. Just had a comment on the OPEP. I think with the other social performance benefits, we're doing very well on a statutory perspective, we should probably be funding into that account that we can afford. I know you're going to make a decision later, but it seems like if we have a position in your path, we should.
Okay. All right. And the intent, I guess, on the OPEPs is to put it in at a later supplement. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, I'm speaking for the commissioners, Charlie. They had an idea that not attributing that money at this time provides more liquidity for the county in case we needed it before depositing it into the OPEP fund. That's all. There is a commitment to do it later in the fiscal year.
And this is in addition to the $100,000 that's already in the budget, correct?
That's correct.
For OPEP? So this would be a total of $300,000 for OPEP. Okay, all right. I think, any other discussion? It sounds to me like we should start with a main motion. We do, okay. So the Finance Committee did make a recommendation to you and voted unanimously to recommend this supplemental budget request minus the $20,000 for legal services to the Registry of Deeds, primarily because we felt that it was, continue, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, other members of the committee, primarily because we felt that it was fostering a persistent issue that just was using public resources for things that we should be able to work out in other ways. Is that correct? Mr. Connors, am I correct about saying it? Okay, all right. So that was our recommendation, and it was unanimous recommendation. That does not mean the board has followed that recommendation, but that is the recommendation.
Maybe heard on that.
Would you like to be, would you like to speak to this, to the supplemental budget?
Certainly.
Register? Okay, I think it's time to do that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, my intention, of course, was to talk just about the IT and where we were as far as, and I still have that opportunity later just to talk where we are.
Yes, when we get to the IT, we'll do that.
From where we sit, I thought the registry has always provided good services to the county and has run it like a business, and there have been stresses with what happened on the, with the, we think, a regression as far as dealing with consumer issues, dealing with cybersecurity, dealing with the fact that we have land records that go to people's homes, that we need to take a special concern that they could be a victim of cybersecurity.
Register, would you try to limit your comments to the FY '23 supplemental budget right now, and then we'll come back to the IT in a moment, please?
Okay, well, again, on the IT request. Again, I don't know if the, if it was forwarded, this letter was forwarded July 7 to the county commissioners requesting an amount. And again, it was requested because, and I quote the letter to the commissioners, "It is an issue of fundamental fairness that the registry be placed on an equal footing with the county financially with respect to litigating these impactful and important controversies. Based on the budget appearing on the county website, the county has a fiscal year 2023 legal budget of $140,000 in comparison to the Registry of Deeds fiscal 2023 legal budget of just $7,000. It is obvious that the Registry of Deeds attempt to seek judicial review and resources can all be too easily thwarted based not on the soundness of legal facts and law or and arguments, but rather on the disparity of funds and the failure of means to elevate those legal facts and arguments so that they can be heard, by, and decided upon the court." Basically, it comes down to an issue of access to justice. With respect to this lawsuit, and again, I recognize, no one, the registry is not in the business of suing people. A couple of years ago, our legal budget was $6,000. In 2019, I believe, we spent $9,000. We do not go around suing people. That's just to conduct business. But I think it's important to kind of remember what has, you know, gotten us here. And what's gotten us here was on June 30, 2021, the registry was left without a registry CIO by that vote, a two-to-one vote. The IT situation on the registry still hasn't been resolved, but it started on June 30. The Registry of Deeds did not pick this battle. Why was there a lawsuit? There was a lawsuit because this advisory board funded a registry CIO position. It was a legally approved and funded position, and it wasn't filled. This advisory board voted for that position. And again, what were we to do? I keep hearing all these plans. Back on June 30, we were just left without a
Register, can I interrupt you just one minute, please? Would you try to stick to the budget question first? And we will come back to the IT, and you have another chance, but I want to try to keep us focused on voting on the dollars first. Okay?
Right, I think, well, the budget question ties to the lawsuit.
Okay.
Again, I recognize, it's okay, you think it's comfortable for the registry employees or myself to be here, you know, it's not, but we have to be. There's a disagreement, and there was a disagreement about what happened on June 30. And that's why I'm speaking about it. Because that lawsuit was filed because the registry was left with no other choice. We did not have a registry CIO. You need a registry CIO to oversee operations. Back on June 30, 2021, and I'll get into this later with the IT, there was two and a half, it was a full-time registry CIO, and there was an IT network administrator, Dan Caparata, who's here tonight, and we had a part-time person, two and a half people. But that lawsuit came about because we were just left without a position that's been in existence before I even got here, 40 years. I've been registered since 2002. We've always had a registry IT. So the legal issue is not, it gets spun all these ways. The legal issue is there was a lawfully and funded position. In fact, there were members on this finance committee on June 9, 2021, that said all positions should be filled that were funded for that budget year, and it wasn't. That is the lawsuit. And again, we have to pursue that. Nothing has changed about that. And as far as, yes, I recognize there might be some quote-quote hard feelings, but I've kept the advisory board out of the lawsuit. That lawsuit, we had no choice but to file a lawsuit. We did not have a registry CIO. We collect $82 million. We record over 200,000 documents. We were left rudderless, and we were, you know, one of the recourse was a lawsuit. And the reason why I bring that up about trying to keep the advisory board out, the IT decision, that was hatched by, you know, not to get into it, the two county commissioners are here, it was a two-to-one vote, Peter Collins and Joe Shea, and I think the county director has made decisions. And again, I've tried to keep the advisory board out of it, and I do want to make clear, I was at a hearing where the county attorney, Scott Lopez, said that because of actions of the advisory board, that they should be a named defendant. So if there's any animosity because the advisory board has been named as a defendant, that was at the suggestion of the county attorney and was agreed to by the judge. So I understand, I'm asking people to put, set aside the fact that people have been, you know, there's a lawsuit going on, it really comes down to basic fairness, but I want that out there. You know, that lawsuit was filed in 2021. The decision was June 30, 2021, and later, in July, we filed the lawsuit. We haven't named the advisory board, but you know, when
Register?
Things like that.
Are you making the case that you need that $20,000 for your legal fees?
I'm trying, I'm trying to make that, and I
Can I just, can I just interrupt you for a minute? Because I will, we will get back to the IT question, but I'd like to just ask the advisory board members if they have any further questions about whether or not the register is being clear about his need for the $20,000. And if that, because that's the question that we have in front of us right now. Is there anybody else that has any questions for that? I think you've made your case, Miss Register. Can you just wait until we get to the IT question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, so let me just say one other thing, so the register's making his case about the $20,000 in this budget for legal fees for the registry to conduct this lawsuit, of which the Norfolk County Advisory Board is a named defendant by the register. I think you left out of your PowerPoint, because it was on the spreadsheet but not the PowerPoint, that there is another $20,000 line item in the supplemental budget that we are voting on tonight, that is $20,000 for the Norfolk County Advisory Board to have legal representation to defend itself from the, with the suit that the register has filed, as we are now, he's amended the complaint to sue both the commissioners and the advisory board. And I wanted to let you know that your executive board took a vote when we had our executive board meeting to ask the commissioners for that $20,000 line item so that we would have some funds to defend ourselves. I did present that to the commissioners today. They did vote, I think, three to zero, to put that money into the supplemental request, and that is why it is before you tonight. And I think that we should, for clarity's sake, because we did have an executive session earlier where we met with Scott Lopez, the attorney that we have now hired as our representing attorney, I think for clarity's sake, it would be wise for the advisory board to take a vote on this amount of money as recommended to be part of the supplemental budget as approved by the commissioners earlier today before we take the vote on the full FY '23 supplemental. Am I right, is that right? Mr. Sadie, I'm looking at all you parliamentarians, we're trying to get this just right.
I'm taking a position, I don't
Okay. No, but I just want to make sure I'm doing it correctly. It's a little extra, but I feel like it's important. Okay, so could I get a motion for the Norfolk County Advisory Board to include $20,000 in the FY '23 supplemental budget request for legal fees to defend itself in the suit as defendants for the Registry of Deeds? Yes, Mr. Ryan? Thank you very much. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Padula. We don't have to do a roll call on this, we can do it for
We just voted the $20,000 right now, please.
We are just voting on whether or not to include that $20,000 in this FY '23 supplemental budget request for the Norfolk County Advisory Board's legal representation. Okay. Yep, very good. Thank you, Mr. Palito. We want to be clear. Okay, I think we can do a voice vote on this. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any absentions? Okay, excellent, okay. Now, let's start We did that. We did that right after the executive session. Yes, okay. Yes. We have a couple of things to clean up. Okay, let's do them.
So in addition, vice board members, in addition to the supplemental items that I mentioned earlier, there are two transfers that would be part of the motion. The transfers are relatively minor. One would transfer $6,737 from the general fund insurance reimbursement for a plane here on the golf course into their automotive repair account, as noted, I believe that's 5301. And also, we're looking to move in our IT department, $39,400 from IT temporary salaries to IT professional technical services. As I mentioned earlier, the temporary worker that we had at the registry resigned on September 2, I believe it was, we're looking to purchase services under a contract, so we're moving the balance of his funds into contract services. So I just want to clean that up. One other item, Madam Chair, for a vote.
Yes.
I do want to remind the chair and the vice chair
Thank you.
that we would require a vote on the Registry of Deeds FY '23 budget as a result of realized actual expenditures. When you're ready for that, I will be happy to
Okay, all right. So we're going to take two votes here. I think we should do the first one on the Registry of Deeds actual expenditures first, then we'll take the second vote on the FY '23 supplemental budget, and I will accept a main motion for that to start the discussion. Okay, can we do the, first is requiring the motion to amend the FY '23 Registry of Deeds appropriation? Can I, will you make that motion?
I'll make the motion to amend the fiscal '23 Registry of Deeds appropriation from As approved by the commissioners on September 7, 2022.
Okay. Second? Thank you. Mr. Crone, can you just explain that?
Yes, briefly, as the advisory board is aware, when we constructed the registry budget in the spring, we based it upon projected expenditures using the, I believe it was the February trial balance costs associated with the registry. We now have actual costs. When you calculate the actual expenditures of the registry as of June 30, and you apply the mandated two and a half percent increase, it resulted in an increased spending level for the registry's budget, excuse me, to adhere to Chapter 64D. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Palito? No, this is about the registry appropriation. It's going up, it's going up.
$94,000.
$94,000 all going up?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, okay. More discussion. Do you agree with the increase in your, in the registry appropriation?
It doesn't really matter what I say or We haven't been consulted, so I'm just happy to, you know, it's their plan. I'm just here, you know, because in the interest of fairness to get the $20,000 that was approved at the commissioner's office, and again, we requested more just to get that done. So as far as the plan, I'm just trying to focus on what's important, which is the IT.
Register, we certainly have heard your input tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cronin?
Relevant to Mr. Ryan's question, the developments that were stated were revealed to the register on Tuesday, August 30th, where we explained what was occurring with the appropriation. Happy to answer any questions. We received no response from the register.
Again, it was an email saying that it was appropriations. I don't quite understand. I've been, I've been around here doing budgets a long time with all these arrows and everything. I didn't, I don't quite understand that. All I know is we made a request, two requests that the registry made, using dedicated deeds excise money, which by statute we're allowed to use. One was for a $60,000 request for attorney's fees, and the other was $32,000 for a legislative agent that's been in existence here at the registry. I was told 2006, I believe it's early to that, 2003. Those were the two requests that we made to increase the monies for the deeds excise.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Padula?
Just a question. So the register has gotten notice of this, and he says he doesn't have, he doesn't care what happens with it. Why, if he doesn't weigh in on it, why are we voting on him to give him this money, other than that we're all waiting to do it?
That's why.
He doesn't know about it, it makes no difference. Why are we going to allocate the money? I just...
Do you want to explain that? Because it's political.
It's part of the mandate, Peter. That's the 64D.
Yeah. It's our fiscal responsibility to make sure that we meet the mandate according to the law.
And notice was given on August 30th. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we are, we're doing what the law requires us to do, which is to make sure he has the money that he's supposed to have.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Can I get a vote on this? Let's get a vote on this motion. All in favor?
The motion is to, is to amend the fiscal 23 registry of deeds appropriation from $3.4, $3,421,869.75 to $3,516,062.26, as approved by the commissioners, September 7th, 2022.
And let's re-vote that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now, the second motion on the table is the FY23 supplemental budget request as presented by the county director, and in the total amount of, do you want to read that, Eric?
Yeah. The amount was $2,938,838.31.
That includes the transfers, the...
Does that include the transfers?
It does. It does. The transfers, the appropriations for capital, the appropriations for stabilization. Stabilization does not include OPEV at this time. It does include the $20,000 for the register as well.
Okay.
And advisory board.
Yeah. Includes all of the supplemental needs as delineated in the spreadsheet, and it includes all of the upper-level transfers for stabilization and capital. Everybody heard that? Okay. Okay. So I will accept a main motion to...
Finance committee recommendation, please.
The finance committee recommendation was to pass the FY23 supplemental budget request with an amendment to eliminate the $20,000 for legal services for the registry.
We're voting on $2,938,838, $918,838.31.
That was the finance committee's recommendation, was nine...
Second?
Okay. Hold on, hold on. We got to get our motion clear here. Okay. We need...
The finance committee recommendation was $2,918,838.31.
Okay. Okay. So Mr. Connors is making a motion to accept the FY23 supplemental budget request, not according to the, not according to the presentation of the director as put forth by the commissioners, but the finance committee recommendation, which is the FY23 supplemental minus the $20,000 for the registry of deeds. Okay. So that's the motion on the table, and Mr. Ryan, you have a second for that? Okay. All right. Now, discussion. Mr. Phelan?
Just a question on it. I agree with the commissioners, what they did.
Okay.
I would leave the money in there. I would not take it. So I don't want to vote against the whole budget, because I agree with everything else on it. And basically, if you take the recommendation of the finance committee, you're forcing people to vote against the whole thing, which I don't agree, you know, which I don't think is, I think it would have been more appropriate to just apply the order, to blow down the motion that is before us, which is the recommendation, and then add an amendment to take it out. Otherwise, I'd vote against the whole thing, which is not what I want to do.
Okay. Mr. Padula, I'm going to get some help here.
The only distinction is, the commissioners made the recommendation of this budget.
Yes.
And that there were some requests for some monies by the register, and the recommendation from the commissioners was $20,000 to the register.
Yes.
And that's, which I assume to help fund some of his legal expenses, which I can assume may have something to do with the lawsuit that he has to get settled for.
Yes.
So having said that, it was a two-to-one vote by the commissioners. They thought it was appropriate to fund some monies to the register. They put in $20,000, and I'm in favor of that. So I'm stuck in the same position that Mr. Phelan is, so I keep...
May I ask a parliamentary question from some of you who are experts? If we vote on the motion that is on the floor by Mr. Connors, and we vote it down, can we then take up the motion for the FY23 budget as presented by the commissioners?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
It would be a new motion.
It would be a new motion. Okay? So I just want to make clear to people that that is an option, that we can vote down the motion, that was the recommendation from the finance committee, we can vote it down, and then we can take up the motion as presented by the commissioners. It does not preclude us from taking that up. Mr. Padula, you're, I'm deferring a little bit to some of these parliamentarians.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to, by no means entertain a potential motion to add the $20,000, friendly amendment, add the $20,000 into the budget.
Okay. That's another way to do it. Another way to do it is a, is an amendment on the main motion to put the $20,000 back, and, and then we would vote, then we wouldn't have to take a whole second vote. That's another way to do it. Excellent.
It's a required two votes.
Right. On the amendment and then the main motion. Okay? All right? I will, I will accept that. Will you accept that as an amendment? A friendly amendment, Mr. Connors, or we're just going to vote on the amendment? We're going to vote on the amendment. Okay.
Keep a second.
All right. We'll need a vote. A second? Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Okay. So what we have on the table is a main motion, which is the finance committee recommendation with an amendment to add back the $20,000 for the legal fees for the registry as recommended by the commissioners. Correct?
So the first motion will be...
On the amendment. We are going to vote on the amendment first. Okay. I think we can do a voice vote on this. We don't have to do roll call?
No, I think we're going to have to. These two things I think we have to do.
We need to do roll call. Okay? All right? This is why I've got a roomful of you who know how to do it. Okay, here we go. All right, we're going to do a roll call on the amendment first. Any further discussion before we take the vote? Mr. Palito?
The amendment is what?
To act, to replace the $20,000 for legal services to the registry that the commissioners originally recommended.
Second.
Okay. That's right.
I'm going to vote against it because I still have a fond of the A school captain.
Okay. All right. Okay. We don't have a, we don't have a motion on that yet.
No.
You're not going to make a motion? Okay. All right. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Everybody's clear what we're doing? Okay. Here we go. Mr. Pedeman? We're ready.
You ready, Phil?
No. Got to get some... Got to catch up.
Okay. We're ready for a roll call on the amendment.
Roll call to add the $20,000 back into...
Yes.
The budget to match the commissioners' original suggestion.
Yes, it is.
All right. Avon votes no. Bellingham. Braintree.
No.
Brookline.
Yes.
Canton.
No.
Sorry.
Braintree was no.
Correct.
Braintree was no, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Brookline was yes. Canton was no. Correct? Canton was no?
Correct.
Ready? Cohasset. Dedham.
Yes.
Dover. Foxborough.
No.
Franklin.
Yes.
Holbrook. Medfield. Medway. Milis. Milton. Needham.
No.
Norfolk. Norwood. Plainville.
Yes.
Quincy.
Yes.
Randolph.
No.
Sharon.
No.
Stoughton.
Yes.
Walpole. Wellesley.
Yes.
Westwood. Weymouth. Rentham.
At 45.79, yes, to 22.31, no.
So the yes passes, so the $20,000 goes back into the original request.
45.79 to 22.31.
So yes, the amendment passes to replace the $20,000 for the registry of deeds' legal services as recommended by the commissioners. Okay. Now, now we will take a vote on the main motion with, as amended. Right? Correct. It was going to be a main motion as amended, and that is, it actually, in effect, is the commissioners' recommended budget. Okay. All right. I think we need to do this by roll again.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, we have a first, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion on the main motion as amended, which in effect is the commissioners' recommended budget? Okay. All right. Let's go.
Okay. Avon votes yes. Bellingham. Braintree. Brookline.
Yes.
Canton.
Yes.
Cohasset. Dedham.
No.
Dover. Foxborough.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Holbrook.
Sorry.
Medway. Milis. Milton. Needham.
Yes.
Norfolk. Norwood. Plainville.
Yes.
Quincy.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Stoughton.
Yes.
Walpole. Wellesley.
Yes.
Westwood. Weymouth. Rentham.
We have 64.67, yes, and 3.43, no.
Okay. The motion passes. The motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much for that. You really did a great job. Thank you. So we don't need any more votes on the money pieces. Okay. So the last piece, I did promise we would just discuss very briefly, the IT. I just want to remind people that the reason Director Cronin reports out to us on the IT is because we requested that he do that, about how the process was going, to make sure we're having IT that serves the county well. And I think this, it's really the only thing, I think, on this issue is, the register, I promised you if you had something to say, we would hear you.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. I know it's late, and luckily, the Red Sox aren't doing that well this year. So really, on the IT, I mean, the only reason I was going to speak on the IT was just this. I, I just think, I don't think, my assessment is a sober one. I don't think it's been going as well as it could. I've tried to keep that between Mr. Cronin and the commissioners, but I did send that out to the advisory board. I mean, we're talking, an organization, as I said, recorded over 200,000 documents, $81 million, and to me, we had an efficient IT department, and I just want to make sure the resources are there to keep the demand of the customers, to keep what they need in place, but also, we're in an era of cybersecurity risks and threats, and that's concerning to me. It's concerning because the FBI has indicated that records can be targeted, as well as, you know, I'm just concerned about the money. And that's one of the big things, because I sent you a letter to the advisory board, and just, you know, where is the plan? You know, you know, I expected, since we talked last spring, that there would be a more considered approach to this consolidated county IT than I think has been in place. I don't find it to be the most transparent process. I don't find that the registry has necessarily been included, but also, more importantly, is that things were said. The county director said they'd have a CIO in place by mid-July, and here we are. And I hope you understand the frustration. It's not directed at anyone in this room, but on June 30th, 2021, we had a registry CIO, we had an IT administrator, Dan Caparata, and we had a halftime person.